Counselors, one more minute. Well, nope, we're at that now. It's two thirty-five, so we will go ahead and start the subcommittee meeting. I just would like to, I cannot see everybody in the meeting room, so if you could just say who's there, that'd be awesome, and then we'll go ahead and get started with the meeting.
Sure, so we have Tina Quagley out of Sullivan, Kathy Bono, Tim Sheehan, and Jerry McCafferty.
Okay, thank you. Oh, same, same team. All right, thank you. So I guess we'll start with the easy, easier ones, not easy. But first, before we get started, I wanted to welcome Counselors Allen, Counselors Govan, Counselor Curran, Counselor Hurst to the meeting. And I wanted to just say, we're gonna start with the household applications and the numbers and the balance in the ARPA account. And just wanted to really thank the ARPA team and even on Tim Sheehan's team for being so responsive on any requests we're sending over email. I'm glad there's emails. I mean, the responses, like same day, next day. Definitely appreciate it, because as you all know, we get these requests at the same rate that we're sending them to you. So definitely appreciate your turnaround time with the responses and for creating those emails, so thank you for that. So Lindsay, I'm gonna kick it over to you to just get started on those household applications.
Sure, so I don't know if we have gone over the numbers since the applications have closed. But the applications are now closed, so we're not accepting any new household direct assistance applications. And the total is just over nineteen thousand that we've received. Of those, just over three thousand have been awarded, and the rest are in review.
Over, just over three thousand? Had a nineteen? Okay, and we're still having the same processing? We can only process two to three hundred a week?
Yeah, so as of right now, actually, we're in the process. We had an RFP out for a vendor to assist us with the household direct assistance program. So as of right now, we're in the process of reviewing those responses and potentially interviewing the applicant, the vendors who submitted interest for that. Because the plan is eventually to have an outside vendor manage this program. It's just a little bit too overwhelming for our staff of four over here. So by doing that and doing that, we've been cleaning up the data, we've been responding to people requesting updates, as you know. So the the level or the volume of checks going out has declined. But I do think that when we get a vendor in here, it's really gonna go much faster than we could ever, ever done it. So I think that shifting our focus to get all this ready to go for an incoming vendor is really the best use of our time right now, so that's what we've been doing.
And so it, it, did it go out to bid in the regular procurement?
Yes.
Fashion? Okay. And, and the vendor will be paid through ARPA funding? Okay, all right. Can you, do you have the updated balance in the ARPA account?
Yeah, so so right now, this is including everything committed. The total remaining is thirty-six million dollars.
Okay, thank you for that.
Sure.
Any questions on the household applications from counselors? Pretty straightforward. Glad you guys are getting a vendor and, you know, freeing up your time, because it's budget season too, so I know that's a lot on Counselor Hurst?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is the, what is the plan for the remaining application? Seventeen thousand, it sounds like? Is it, is the, is there any sort of plan? Are we giving the agencies any sort of guidance? As to how to move forward, how many to fund, what order to fund them in? You know, did we have an allocated amount for households? I don't, I don't remember. And where are we at with respect to that allocated amount if we did?
We didn't, Counselor, and as of right now, all of those all of those details will be, be worked out, but I don't have finite answers for you on any of those questions right now.
Thank you, Lindsay. I'm assuming you'll let us know when you get those.
And Counselor Govan's asked, um, three thousand application has been approved or sent out?
Awarded, sent out.
Oh, sent out, okay. All right. Thank you, Lindsay. All right, we're gonna move over to the, to the meaty side.
If I could just add on a point to note, when we went out in the RFP process, we wanted to change the, the payment method to the individual assistance, so that we would look more at a debit card as opposed to going through a city process that, as all of us know, can be a little time consuming. So of, of around eligibility, once the eligibility determination is made, they're able to directly issue a debit card out to that individual for their assistance.
So they would get mailed a debit card?
They would do it, well, there's two approaches with the respondents. There, it, they would either, it would either be mailed to them, or it, they would be able to come and pick it up.
Oh, okay, okay. That makes, that makes it a lot easier. And that's just for the fourteen hundred ones?
Yes.
Okay, well, perfect. Thank you for letting us know that.
And we, we did ask in the RFP, I believe we were, correct me if I'm wrong, Lindsay, I think we wanted a volume in the RFP of over two thousand applications being processed and reviewed on a monthly basis. I think that was the number. Back to Counselor Hurst's question, I, if I understood it correctly, with the cap, the cap was fourteen hundred dollars.
I think he meant like, how much we're gonna give out, like? Is it like?
How much the budget is?
Is that what you meant, Counselors? Let me not speak.
Yeah, yeah, no, 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 I mean, you're, you're spot on. I mean, if we're, and, and even more to the point, if we're talking about two thousand a month, I'd love to know what the numbers are for two thousand a month in terms of fourteen hundred dollar payments. Like, we're gonna be going through it pretty quickly, and it sounds like we're gonna be looking to get through the bulk of it, I mean. And, you know, four or five, maybe six months, I mean.
We're trying to get through as late as we can, for sure.
So I guess my thing is, it sounds like the intent is to get through it. Right? Like, the intent is to get through all of the applications and, to the extent possible, issue fourteen hundred dollar payments.
And we also gotta keep in mind that some are fraud, some are duplicate, some are, so even though there's like, probably like sixteen thousand plus left, they're not all gonna get payments, because.
Having read the responses, the both respondents have software capability to detect fraud that's far superior to what we had employed. So I'm pretty confident that the level of fraud associated with this, you know, will be significantly reduced by an outside vendor.
That's great, because I think like, they would probably have technology to be like, oh, this is a duplicate address, you know.
Well, it's so time consuming for an individual to have to try to figure that all out. They've got access to databases that, you know, they just type in the name and the address, and they get confirmation direct.
Exactly, so that's great. That's great, we definitely need that, so I don't think that it'll be all, but a, a lot more will go out in a faster, at a faster pace. So, thank you for explaining that, Tim. So now we'll move over to your side of the wheelhouse. I don't know where you wanna start, but I have some specific, oh, you got a screen share, okay.
I can run through this quick, and maybe you want to, because I, I will obviously email this out to everyone. But this is a list of the awards, and it has the program, the status of its awarded, or if the contract has been executed, the amount requested, and the amount awarded, whether it's in a qualified census tract or not, and that is based on whether it was in a qualified census tract at the time that the application was reviewed. Whether the, if it's a business, whether it was minority owned or not, whether it was women owned, veteran owned, the neighborhood that it's in. So this list, you know, will get sent out to all. And then we have this, which was adopted from what Melanie had left behind, that we were able to edit. So this shows of the businesses that were awarded funds, the percentages of those awards in the minority women, veteran owned categories, and of the funding that's been awarded to businesses, the percentage of the funding that is to businesses in a QCT, minority owned, women owned, veteran owned, and then of the nonprofits that have been awarded, sort of comparable breakdown, but not quite the same, but really based around qualified census tract. And then, can we pause?
Because I gotta, I gotta understand what, what I'm reading. So, um, if you could go up just a little bit more. Right there. So the businesses awarded field is telling us out of two hundred and two, a hundred and twenty-two are minority? Or women or veteran?
No, no. Um, yes, yes, I'm sorry. The total awards of two oh two, a hundred and twenty-two of those were businesses. Of that one hundred and twenty-two, this is the numbers for the percentages, and this is the percentage of that.
Gotcha. And then it go down to the dollar amounts, right? Same thing? Okay, so.
So this is funds that went to businesses here, total ARPA awards funds that went to businesses, and that percentage of the funds.
So saying twenty-seven percent of all the businesses that were awarded, twenty-seven percent were minority women?
No, no, sixty-six percent were minorities. This is, see this line?
Yeah, but what's the business award over the total ARPA awards? Like, what's the difference between those two columns?
Businesses represent twenty-seven percent.
Businesses represent, yeah, twenty-seven percent of the funds awarded, of all ARPA funds, all ARPA, so far.
All ARPA that went out, fifty-three?
Out of that, yeah, the fifty-three million that were showing at the, on the top chart.
Because I'm trying to say of all total ARPA, right? We only got thirty thousand left, right?
Small business, right. These are just our programs, yes.
Oh, just your program, so not yet.
If these numbers match the chart above, and though like, the total on the chart above will be fifty-three million, and that makes up all our programs. And then, so of the total award, the fifty-three million from the chart above, twenty-seven percent or fourteen million went directly to businesses. And then we broke down the businesses of exactly that fourteen million. We broke down the categories, whether they were a QCT, minority woman, or veteran. So located.
Fifty-three, sorry, um, sorry, um, fifty-three million includes NERF, it includes all those programs that you guys.
Yes, so just to be clear, these business numbers also include any businesses that were awarded funding under NERF or build back. So we did sort of lump that into the business analysis when we did that, because I think in the previous time, we had talked about this, you said that you, you know, you wanted to see it overall and not just by program, so we tried to get you that information in a way that made sense.
So, um, does it, it doesn't include the nonprofit?
It, this business number does not include the nonprofit, because we can't compare whether a nonprofit is minority owned, right? It's not, it's not a real thing, so. Yeah, so then but the way that we did that was to show you the nonprofits in qualified census tracts, that is the category that the Treasury calls out as disproportionately impacted. So that's where those numbers come from.
Are all of the nonprofits located in Springfield?
Yes, yes, we, we have not funded anybody who is not a nonprofit that's not located in the city of Springfield.
Okay, before you leave that screen, sorry. I just wanna know if counselors have any questions on those numbers. And can you go up to the first one? The only other fields that I would like to see on that chart is the payments that went out. So first, first payment, second payment, because I was looking at one of Melanie's old Melanie's old charts, and I'm just wondering how it's determined that an organization or business will get their payment in one lump sum? Or if, if it's gonna be breaking, broken down into two payments? Like, I, I just couldn't figure out the, the reason for that.
From a policy standpoint, Counselor, we have changed the way the payments are ultimately made.
Going forward.
Going forward, and that is determined relative to your contract. So once you have your contract, it'll basically have a schedule as to how payments will be released and how the, the applicant can do a draw on their award. There was a concern that how it was being done was that there was being a full fifty percent of the award released all at once. And then, you know, there was, it was hard to have control in understanding how the entity was ultimately spending that money, and whether it was in compliance with the agreement.
Yeah, but what about the agreements for the million dollar awardees that most of them got their payments in lump sums?
I, I, I finance what can maybe speak to that, but that, the change that we had in terms of the payment came when these programs were transferred over to us.
Gotcha.
So to also just say, that's not to say that folks that need an advance payment can't request that, but we're asking them to spell out exactly what they're getting that requested, what they're requesting that advance for, and to give us some sort of supporting documentation. So for instance, there are some businesses that are looking to purchase a vehicle. They would need to get us the quotes for that vehicle in order to release that advance payment.
Now, that's understandable, but.
Coming back to, you know, ensuring that from a compliance standpoint, we're gonna be able to report back adequately to the federal government.
Right, and, and that's important, because audits are coming.
Is in line with how we run the other federal grant programs, CWBG and Home, and so when we brought it over here, we went, well, we have a standard way of releasing money, let's apply that. So that's where, where the model came from.
Now, for, obviously, folks that are already under contract to get a fifty percent award upfront, we can't change their contracts unless they were to agree to that. I don't think anyone's gonna agree to that. So, you know, we're sort of living with those contracts as they stand, but going forward, this will be the way it works.
All right, so thank you guys for that explanation. That all makes sense to me. Lindsay, do you have an answer on the lump sums?
Yeah, Counselor, I definitely don't. I would have to look into it. I wasn't involved in that minutia detail of specific awards, but who exactly is it you're wondering about?
I'll email them to you. And I'll include the, the council on the emails. They're not left in the dark, and you don't have to answer the question multiple times. I see your hands, Counselor Govan and Hurst, so let me ask Counselor Govan's question. It says, what was awarded so far, and how much is left for small businesses? Like, what's in the small business pot? I'm done with that screen too. I just wanna, um, if you could still add those two columns, so we'll know how the payments are dispersed.
But in terms of what's left to review.
Like, what's left in the small business buckets and the other buckets, yeah.
So I have an overview of what's left to review in terms of application wise. What I don't have to provide is an allocated budget amount for small business at this point for going forward, and I, I'm not sure which, which way Counselor Govan's question is. I can tell you what we have left in terms of numbers of applications to review, if that's helpful. And so that's what this page is. So we have seventy-five small business applications left to review, and that's twenty-four percent of the, of what was submitted when we last reported to the council on the small business program. We had fifty-five percent left to review, or a hundred and fifty-five applications, so we've chopped that by half, so.
Yeah, that's good.
Let me come back to Counselor Govan's question. Kathy was just getting the last numbers that we had, and we should.
And she also has another question, so, um, before we go over this whole chart, let me ask her two questions, and then get Counselor Hurst's questions. But if you could answer the amount left in the small business bucket, and then I'll ask her a second question.
So the, the actual amount I don't have, I think Kathy went to.
So let me ask her a second question. It is, when will the awardees get their payments?
So in terms of small business, everyone that has been awarded funds has received a contract packet that includes all of the forms they need to get back to us, including any budget revisions or things like that, and it also includes a sample of how they fill out each of those forms, and they have a contact person that they're supposed to contact if they have questions. So really, they get, they get to contract as quickly as they get us that stuff back.
And what if they missed the deadline? Because I got some folks that might have missed the deadline, but they were awarded. So here, here's how it originally went, right? They would get awarded, get the funding, and on the backend, Chase Swan's department would help them with all those documents and paperwork that they needed, the post-compliance folks. Now it feels like they're awarded, and they have to complete all these documents before they get a payment out, so it kinda like changed.
Yes, so they have to complete those documents in order to get to contract.
But the other contracts had attachments.
The other contracts also had attachments. There are definitely a couple more attachments. But we have someone who walks them through all that. She's been going out to businesses to help them if they have questions, and has been available. Honestly, she's been a rock star in the amount of businesses she's been responding to, and how quickly she's been responsive.
Thank you. We're getting the emails, we're getting the phone calls and the texts, so.
Yeah, so, um, I, I hope that answers that question.
I mean, when we sent out the attachments, we also sent out samples of how to fill out each form, like the form you have to fill out, and then a sample of exactly how to fill out the form and the sample, so hopefully that would make it easier for people, rather than, because a lot of them never seen these forms before, so we did try to make it as simple as possible. But Lori is meeting with people, going to their businesses. They come in here all the time, and she does it for them.
That is very comparable to how we did primary income as well. It's a very similar packet.
I think it's just overwhelming, because they had to do this long application, and now they get a whole new packet that looked like an application again, and a lot of paid for assistance, because I got some like Facebook tags, like, I will pay people to help me with this packet again, even though it feels like we already submitted.
Told folks do not pay any, like, so one of the things that we are offering is notary services free of charge for folks. We have told them, do not pay anyone to do that, because we know that some applicants had been doing that. And Lori has been available to walk them through in any way that she can. So I think the most complicated thing for folks has been to get a unique entity identifier number, which comes from the feds and is a federal requirement. So we don't have a lot of control over that, and that is definitely something that folks have complained about that process.
But Lori has also walked people through and have had people come here, and she's done it for them, so if you talk to anyone, Counselor, with you, please tell them, do not hire anyone to help them with the paperwork, to come in here. We will walk them through, we will do, they shouldn't be hiring any, they shouldn't be paying anyone to help them with their applications now, yeah.
I think what would be helpful for us, if we get a sample of the packet, so we can and, and before changes happen, can we get a notification that next week, Monday, this change is gonna happen to the ARPA process? Because it's just like, they talk to each other in the community, and they'd be like, we didn't have to do that, and and Counselor, why do I have to do this now, and, and they didn't have to do it before? So I think that the more communication that we have with each other, and with the community, the better we are. And I just wanted to get to Counselor Hurst's question, but if we could just get those samples, that'd be helpful for us. Thank you, Counselor Hurst.
Yeah, I guess the first question is, why not, why not hire an agency to do this level of oversight as well? Just, it seems like it's a lot, and it's a lot for any department to take on. And so, a, and then it, it also seems like it's getting even more complicated as, as we go. Have you all thought about potentially bringing someone on to do this level of scrutiny? And I, and I say that because, you know, one of the frustrations that I've heard is that, you know, now folks have to, and if I'm understanding it correctly, folks have to produce, or, or show that they spent the funds accordingly, right? According to their contract before they get dispersed the rest of the funds? Is that accurate?
Yes, that's always been a requirement, is my understanding.
Obviously, Counselor, they always needed to spend the funds according to the contract that they had with the city, so.
Of course, of course.
Ultimately, the, the only real difference is that now before they, they're doing draws, they need to tell us how they're spending that money, and ultimately, what their needs are going forward, so that we can ensure that the money is being aligned with the contract.
I guess I would prefer smaller draws, right? So, so, but, but, but no, hear me out. I mean, I, without folks having to produce what it is that they're spending it on, and all sorts of, you know, information that makes it that much more difficult, and folks kinda wanna say like, I, I, I'd rather not have it if I have to produce all of this. Why not make smaller draws and have, or, or allow them to make smaller draws? And then to prove that they're spending that money accordingly before they get another draw. I think the, the biggest concern that I have is that folks never had money to start with. And so the idea that, you know, they've gotta either put the money up front and say, hey, I paid for this, can't you see how this aligns with the contract? You know, to me, is an extra step that makes it that much more difficult. In addition, producing any more additional paperwork is a hindrance to businesses that feel as though they've already jumped through all of the bureaucratic hurdles that we put in front of them. So I don't know what the answer is, but I, it just seems to me like an agency, you know, could do that level of scrutiny, and, you know, folks can make smaller draws, because obviously you are monitoring a draw of ten thousand dollars, or a draw of five thousand dollars is going to be a significant burden on you all. You know, so anyhow, those are my thoughts, and, you know, I just wonder if an outside agency for that makes more sense. And, you know, you all have my thoughts on the struggles of, of these businesses. I mean, I just think it's, it's that much harder. And if there's a way to avoid that, that'd be great.
With those of us that are involved in the contracting of these things, you know, it, it, it's, it's a difficult process. And again, you know, we need to consider as well the businesses that are involved in the process, and their, you know, what their capacity is as well. But to answer the question in terms of contracting, the thought process has been that if we ultimately go out with a third party dealing with individual assistance, then everybody that is currently assigned to work with ARPA would then be dealing with contracting, and that would bring, you know, significantly more. And that would bring, you know, significantly more uh capacity and speed to getting through the contracting process. Um, if these questions relative to contracting have been, um. Uh, an ongoing discussion and we're trying to think about, you know. Uh, how we can make the process as efficient and as less cumbersome as possible, um.
While also meeting our limitations.
I feel like the other piece to talk about is compliance, um, I think what we have here actually is. People who have been handling federal money and have been through multiple federal audits, so we actually have a team here that. Has a deep understanding of what keeps the city out of trouble and makes sure that um the money is all properly accounted for and. We never have to pay anything back, and so I think adding that layer and and I think it's. Um, it's a challenge, um, nationwide right now, finding people who have that experience. Because every community has this money, um, so I'm not sure that there's people that we could farm that out to. Um, and and know that the city is going to be properly spending the money and able to document that we properly spent it. Five years from now when we get audited.
Does that answer your question, counselor Hearst?
Um, yeah, uh, yeah, to a certain degree, um, I get it.
Anything else, just email us all. Or you can ask it later.
I clearly hear counselor Hearst, I know, concerns and, you know, they're they're certainly not lost on us in terms of. You know, the difficulties that, you know, these businesses have. To try and, you know, it it think about it, many of these businesses don't have accountants, they don't have a legal lawyer. They they are operating, you know, day to day and, you know, their their bookkeeping. Is, you know, not the best, um, and, you know, that that's the somewhat. Is the clientele that this program is designed to service, but, you know. Ultimately, coming back to Jerry's point, you know, the city needs to ensure that it's got the the. Compliance component and that we we monitored this so that we know how our money is being spent, we can actually see it. Um, and, uh, you know, that that's kind of where the rub is.
We're trying to be as flexible as we think we can while also staying within, you know, the limits of this. Like, for instance, we have businesses that are saying, you know, could we potentially get six months of rental assistance advanced to us? So we don't have to commit, pay it out and then come in for reimbursement and we've approved that, assuming they get us their lease and we can pay them out for that exact amount.
Well, what I was glad to see in the application, sorry, counselor Hearst, was, um, you have some of my, um. Coalition members in my daytime job as small business technical assistance provider, so I hope that. The applicants um are looking to some of those organizations to get their accounting and legal structures um in place. So they they will be able to, um. Report correctly, so I was glad to see that in application, I was like, ooh, coalition partners, um, counselor, what were you gonna say?
I was just gonna say, I hope everybody's jumping through the same hoops, that's all, you know, your million dollar businesses down down to your. Five thousand dollar businesses, so with that being said, appreciate it, uh, you guys keep up the work, good work, um, I get it's not easy.
Is it a fair process? That's a good question, and that's, um, counselor current, I do see your hand.
The answer to that, if your question is yes, it's it's the same process for everyone. It as I said, though, you know, the 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 problem between some of the um more sophisticated applicants. Is that they have that information at, you know, immediate. Um, and they have, they they call their accountant and their accountant produces the information. It's far more, it's a different situation with the the much smaller scale businesses, um. Uh, i- in terms of, um, them being able to readily produce that information.
And and so I guess, I'm I'm sorry, last, just my last point, I. We should have always known that that was going to be the case, right, and the fact and the fact that, you know. That we we haven't accounted for that to the the to the degree that. We don't have folks working with these businesses side by side to make sure they're producing. These, you know, this level of paperwork so that they get their money just as fast as the million dollar person. Means that we've done something wrong. And we've got to rectify that, right, because they needed the money way before the million dollar person. You know what I mean, like that, so so I mean, I get, I get it, but I.
Counselor is actually targeted to the the group that I'm talking about.
That's Chase Swan's department because that's what I thought that department was created for.
So they are currently working on all of the applications that were contracted prior to. The program moving over here, um, right now we have folks over here and because that requires. Sort of a higher level now on the back end of trying to track down documents, they're. My understanding is they're pretty focused on that, so for the folks that we're putting under contract over here. Um, right now Lori is trying to also, she's processing those payments and but. Because we're getting a lot of the documentation on the front end, it's reducing some of the compliance work on the back end.
Okay, counselor Karen.
Thank you, I my question is for Lindsey, uh Lindsey, of the thirty six million dollars remaining, i- i- just for clarification. Is that money that we are deciding to do with in the future or like what, uh? Or is that money that is already accounted for, you're saying there's thirty six million dollars left in the fund?
Yeah, so it's nothing that's been officially accounted for in any programs yet, but it could go to increasing current programs, it could go to new programs. So none of that has been clearly defined yet for the remaining funds.
Thank you, a- and I a further question, I I had a a question for TJ at the last council meeting. Has any of this, some of the money or one of the. Uh, parts where you can spend the money on is water infrastructure, am I correct?
Yes.
And have we spent any, as a water insurer asked for any of this grant money, I know other communities are spending on. Water infrastructure, but how how much have we spent so far on water infrastructure or is there any plans to spend any of this on water infrastructure? Obviously, uh, we're all familiar with water rates that are rising and consequently rent rental rates, residential rental rates are rising as well.
Yeah, as of right now, nothing has been spent on water infrastructure and I am not aware of any conversations about. Any of that funding going towards that, not to say there isn't, but I'm not aware of it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, counselor Karen.
And thank you for everything you work.
We could go back to counselor go bonds question, um, for small business, um, based on the. The uh general allocation to the small business program, there's roughly four point four million dollars remaining.
Four point four million remaining, okay.
And we have. We have approximately seventy five applications left to get through.
So then.
Fifty five include the fourteen that um have to be reviewed? I mean, by the advisory committee?
No.
No, no, that's a separate number.
There's a separate category for what's with the.
What's going to the advisory.
So eighty nine potential awards could be going out, okay? All right, thank you.
Um, this screen is just a breakdown of. The funding that's been awarded to minority owned businesses under the small business program.
So eleven? Eleven?
No, eleven is non-minority.
Non-minorities and.
Nine minority owned businesses. That's ninety percent of the of what's been awarded.
What are those total, that total? Awarded contract, I don't get the total.
I think she's asking your next slide, which.
Okay.
Sorry, so so this is the total dollar amount that's been awarded under the small business program, is that what you're asking?
I was looking at the whole total column, so non-minority owned businesses only received six hundred and twenty five thousand?
Yes, out of the six point five ish that's been awarded.
And this is just.
In the small business program.
Okay, so we're not talking Nerf or any of those other ones, okay?
Moving on, uh, this is an overview of the nonprofit assistance program, so. Currently, we have about twenty percent of the applications that came in left to be reviewed, that's approximately twenty nine. Applications left. And this is just a breakdown of where they stand, the numbers you can see here. And then the next few pages is the awards by category of the service. And then I we have an actual, again, a pie chart that breaks that down. So the largest categories are currently youth development and community services. And then that's followed by health and human services, affordable housing and workforce development. But you can sort of, you can see on this, on the charts before that, so when I send this around, sort of how that's broken down. And what went into each category.
Okay, thank you, um, counselor Govan said. Um, her observation is the average awarded to non-minorities is almost the same as minority businesses. And their number is much greater, just an observation. Are you talking about the amount, um, the dollar amount, counselor Govan, she's talking about the dollar amount?
I would say the average dollar. Back in small business.
Yep.
Up another slide.
Small bit, no, she said not, yes, my business, I think.
The average.
Yeah, so the average awarded contract to minority owned businesses is slightly higher. Than the average awarded to non-minority owned businesses, I think that's what the observation she's making.
Is that what you're talking about, counselor? Yeah.
Okay. So then, um, moving on from there to the housing programs. Just to give you all an overview of where we are there, the healthy homes program. We have reviewed all of those applications with the exception of one. Um, that doesn't mean that they're all to contract, but what that means is we've gone through them, we've made determinations. Pretty much about who's eligible and who's not eligible, um, and now we're just working towards getting all of those projects. Through the inspection process and to contract.
That's really good.
And that'll go until obviously the money runs out. Um. Right, so and when we recorded to you all previously, the last report on this. We had forty four percent left to review, so it's definitely significant progress there.
Yeah, that's really good.
Um, and then for the exterior repair, we have gone through all of those applications, there are none left to review. And now again, we're just sort of working through that process, but we've got twenty one of those under contract. Those are bidding much quicker because they, we can do multiple, uh. Walkthroughs at once, they're less complicated projects, the homeowner doesn't necessarily need to be on site for the contractor to give a price. Um, so that and obviously it doesn't involve any, you know, extensive lead abatement or anything like that, so. These are anticipation is they will move much quicker, um, and you can sort of see that by the numbers.
Yes, that's good, great progress on both of those, um, programs, so thank you for that. Now I have some specific questions that this information isn't going to cover. Um, I got an email today about the ARPA appeal decision process, um, when folks appeal. And from the email, in my understanding, an email went out yesterday. Saying, do you want to present in two days on your application and it do you have additional information? On the appeal that you want to send to us, but didn't act specifically for what the information is. And when I read the denial letter, it just said, we're denying you because, um, we have too many requests, that's exactly what the letter said. And I was like, well, that's not a, that's not a great reason, we got a lot of requests and everything. So I just wanted to hear about the appeal process, how that works, who's involved and will those applications come back to the ARPA Oversight Committee?
The um, the Wyssen Academy, which is the one you're speaking of, I was in contact with her last week. Um, and I uh had sent and the the one you're responding to is I, because I had sent to her. Um, last week, did you want to present on Wednesday, I mean, on Thursday, the twenty third, I didn't hear back, I sent her another one, I didn't hear back. And then I sent her a third one, and that's the one she responded to. Um, so I have been trying to get in touch with her, um, on the, but if she, I mean, we have them every couple of weeks, the Zoom, so if she's not ready to present. Um, and then that that's fine, if that's what you're saying.
I don't know that she's.
He wants a copy of the scoring that occurred, we could provide that to her if she requested it, yeah.
I think that would be helpful for her because the letter told her nothing, the letter said, uh. We got too many applications, so yours is decline, that's.
Was that a letter from before that?
Yeah, that that was from before, but that's not a great explanation to deny somebody because you got too many, we got too many of everything. So then deny everybody or deny nobody, um, for that, and so how does the appeal process work?
I don't think that the letter actually said that, counselor.
I got the letter, I got the letter. It didn't say that word.
I I we're happy to go back and look at the the exact letter.
I mean, I I'll just share it with you guys, that's my understanding of what it said, like, we have a lot of requests in house. Um, so we're denying your application, there was no reason, there wasn't like, it doesn't meet meet the ARPA. Qual um guidelines, it is not servicing the population, there was no reason behind it. So I don't even know why they score low, like maybe having that information would be helpful.
We'll definitely go back and take a look at it.
And we're happy to send her a copy of the scoring there.
All right, that would be helpful.
Yep, because the score sheet has more detail.
So can we go back?
What the letter is, because uh what we, I think what we want to be saying is, um, you know, we scored your application and did not score high enough.
Yeah, that would be, yeah, better.
So let's just take a look at the language we've got and make sure that that it does reflect. More than just we got too many applications. Not our intention.
So how does the appeal process work?
So the appeals process is listed on the the website.
It's listed on the website?
Yeah. We you can actually, you can share screen.
Oh, sure, yeah, I can pull it up.
And then what, while you're pulling that up, can you, um, do you guys have a number of how many declined applications has been overturned via appeal?
We're we're just starting the appeal process, counselor, there have, there's. One medium on it. I think I understand your question, uh, with the advisory committee as well, so. Most of these, um, un- unless the advisory committee itself has the uh declined an application. Most of these, um, were based on scoring that was too low to get to the advisory committee. So that's where most of the appeals are in terms of applicants saying, you know. For one reason or another, um, they they want to appeal their their, um. The decision or the determination regarding your application so that it can get to the advisory committee.
Oh, okay, so we'll go back to the advisory committee.
If the appeals group takes a determination that, um. Some information was missed or there's new information that adds, you know, a different character to the application. And then it deserves, it warrants the advisory committee's. Uh, consideration, then it moves up to the advisory committee and goes through the normal process.
And who's on the appeals team?
It's myself, Jay and Kathy.
Okay. Any other questions from counselors on that process? All right, I think I have, let me see.
And we have tried to update this website, so it links to all of the programs that there's more information, all the press releases are here. When you click through to the programs, um. For instance, like the nonprofit program, you can actually see all of the awards and who they went to, so we're just trying to. Beef that up a little bit.
Okay. All right, well. Are you guys getting a lot of appeal requests? Are you guys getting a lot of appeal requests?
We have seven that we reviewed and we are going to discuss tomorrow. We have, uh, four more. Organizations that we're going to hear from tomorrow. And then I have three more pending that I just received, so, um. Less than fifteen at this point.
And no one has been promised anything, correct?
No one has been promised anything.
Okay. Um. Zeta said, Counselor Govan said, I want to thank and expand ARPA team for their very hard work. Thank you very much. Counselor Allen, I see that you unmuted.
Yeah, um, yeah, I've listened to the whole thing. It's been great information. The questions that I had, you know, pretty much covered by everybody else, but thanks, everybody for, uh. For all the, for all the work, all the follow-up and, under all the stress. Appreciate it.
It really seems much more streamlined, explainable, fair. Um. Then I could say has been the history. Um, so thank you guys for that and the hard work on getting in the streamline process. I think that, um. The experience from your team, Tim, and working with federal grants. And some of the, um, processes that you already have in place. Um, is really helpful to the process, process for the small business, new business and all the other. Applications that you're having because audit is coming. I'm on the Oversight Advisory, ARPA Advisory Committee on the state level now, so it's coming. And, um, so I think that it will do the city justice to have like all this in place. I don't know. What, what's going to happen with the applications that were, um, awarded prior to. Um. Your team taking over this process. I'm not really sure. What's going to happen there. But. We have to wait and see, I guess. Um. Any other questions or comments from counselors? Thank you all for all the hard work. Lindsay, your team too. I mean, when I say they've been fabulous, I get more. Um, emails about the fourteen hundred dollars than I get about the small businesses, so. Um, thank your team. They have been extremely responsive, professional in their responses, like. Setting clear expectations. I haven't really seen the emails from your team so much, Tim. Um, people haven't really been CCing, um, us on, well, me personally on those, but the, uh. Fourteen hundred dollar ones, I'm getting calls and I'm like, can you just email this ARPA and CC me? So we get a lot more of those requests. I guess it's like nineteen thousand of them too, so.
Yeah. With a certain volume comes a certain level of response.
Exactly, and it's overwhelming.
I would say if we, counselor is reaching out to us directly to try to get some information about the status of an application. We're trying to copy that counselor on the response back.
Oh, you definitely do, yeah. And most of it comes right from Tim, which gives it another level of, yeah. I definitely appreciate it because it's like. Can't, can't fight with the director. Counselor Hurst?
Yeah, I just, I did wanted to highlight that. I mean, you guys, every time somebody comes with an actual issue regarding their application. Uh, you all have been spot on in terms of getting back to me and getting back to the applicant and, you know, or getting back to the applicant and CCing me. So, um, I appreciate that so much, uh, more helpful. Um, and, you know, it just allows us, us to appear as though we're doing our advocacy work on behalf of the constituents, so thank you.
Yeah, definitely. It's so helpful. I have gotten a lot of, thank you, it makes me look good. Thank you for checking this. Thank you. And I'm like, I'm not doing any of this work, but sending the email, just getting CC'd, but. Um, it's just, it's, it's really like a total like. One eighty? Um, from no communication, no emails, no anything to like, you guys like really move quickly based on. The, uh, feedback and responses that you got from these meetings and from emails and things like that, so it's definitely greatly appreciated. I know I seem harsh sometimes in my communication, but, um, this is because I'm getting a lot of flack in the street, so. Um, you know, I just really want you guys to know that it's definitely appreciated, the hard work and is noticed, so thank you so much.
Well, thank you, counselors, for the feedback and, uh, certainly, uh. You're taking the time to, to be involved in the process and, you know, basically, you, you're the ears that are on the street and people, you know. Bring all of their concerns relative to the program directly to you, so, you know, if you're hearing it, then, you know, we need to hear it as well.
Mm-hmm, and you guys. You guys are accepting the feedback. Uh, any other questions, comments, concerns? Because it is three thirty.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you for a great meeting and great information. We look forward to getting the documents sent to us, so thank you very much.